To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's Arundicote Planning Board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exits. In the event of emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs, and please do not use the elevator. The meeting notes are taken by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourselves each time you come to the podium, and please speak into the microphone. The meeting minutes are not intended to be a verbatim record, but only to indicate the sum and substance of the proceedings. The meetings/ workshops are being recorded on our ICAT department and broadcast on Spectrum Channel 1303. The board will follow all the items in order they appear on the agenda, of which tonight there's only one, with copies of the agenda near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or agent shall come to the podium, present their case. During this time, the planning board members will have the opportunity to question and comment on the case. For public hearings/cases, the chairman will open the case for public input, in which anyone wishing to speak regarding the case will come to the podium, state your name and address, and direct your comments to the board. Once all public input has been received, the applicant and/or agent will be given the opportunity to respond to the public input. Once all public input has been completed, the chairman will close the public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Please call the case on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First case is case number PB 2025 point oh eight point oh one. Land Tech Planning and Surveying, acting as agent for Lexington One Properties, otherwise known as 633 Titus Avenue LLC, is seeking preliminary final site plan approval for the development of a new 2,370 square foot two-story restaurant, Arundicote Hots, with site-related improvements, on premises 633 Titus Avenue, in the mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Sheraba with Land Tech, representing this application this evening. As I said at the workshop, we look forward to bringing Arundicote Hots back to its original location. I'm here with Tom Perdev, who's the owner and operator of the previous Arundicote Hots, and now the reincarnated Arundicote Hots that we're looking for approval tonight. The public notice describes this location very well, but we're basically at the corner of Granger Avenue and Titus Avenue, across the right-of-way from House Guitars. This is a very small site. It's 0.17 acres in size, and is almost entirely impervious with an existing parking lot, two curb cuts, there's existing striping, existing lighting, and we have all utilities at the site, so sewer, water, gas, and electric are all right there. We had the opportunity to print up this project a couple of weeks ago at the workshop, and we had a lot of lively discussion. I appreciated the feedback. I also appreciated the meeting notes that Michelle provided. That was a good guide for us, and I think what I can do is kind of go through and tell you what we've done to date related to those. So, one of the first things is, the other thing I'd like to mention too, we had an opportunity to work with the DPW. We met onsite to review the modifications that we're proposing to the sidewalk, the location of the patio, and the features that were proposed related to that. Erin was very helpful. We made a few minor tweaks based on her comments, and I think that we have a good plan related to the right-of-way of along Granger with the elimination of one of the curb cuts, and I think the board was worried about people parking in that area, and so we've done that, and I can explain that. We've provided a little bit of landscape plan. We have 150 square feet of green area on this whole property. Most of it is west and adjacent to the patio that we're proposing along Titus Avenue, and then there's a small section along the east side of the proposed building. The building is a two-story building, as we've shown before. We've had made some minor changes to the elevation, and we can get more into that, but with two weeks' time, we couldn't do a lot with the architect to get anything more substantial changes. But we have a feel that we know what we want to give you, and I've given you some examples of copies of some of the materials that we want to look at. The, so one of the first few things that I think that we want to talk about is the height of the building is 32 feet high to the top of the parapet wall. The main building is 28 feet tall to the roof. That does several things for us. It does provide us a wall to shield the HVAC equipment that's going to be placed on there, on the rooftop. So you will not see that from Titus or the general public. Sticking with the HVAC, we were asked to determine how many decibels that the HVAC and the cooler motors will have. From our research, looking at manufacturers, we're somewhere between 50 and 60 decibels at 30 feet. Just to let you know that the, you know, I just looked at other decibel levels. A vacuum cleaner, 75 decibels, which is pretty loud. A business office is 60 to 85 decibels. City traffic is 85 decibels. So I don't think that the fact that these air conditioners are running will have any impact on the neighborhood, or the traveling, or walking public. They'll be out of sight, out of mind. The other issue that we talked about was parking. We do have, we do meet the code requirement. Seven are required. We do have eight spots proposed, but Tom Perdev did have a moment and contacted Mike Nolan, and so any overflow parking, he can't say anything in writing, but any neighboring businesses are welcome to park in his facility. We have an email to that, which I'll provide to Michelle as well. The lighting is another issue. We are proposing goose neck lights on here. We are proposing no lighting to be spilled off-site. We are not adding any additional light poles to the property. There's light poles on our property, there's one along the west right-of-way of Granger Avenue, which is almost like a streetlight, has a historic lighting feel. The other lights that are around us are on the bank property. They have two heads each, and they light up the area very, very well. I took the opportunity to drive there myself. So any additional lighting will be all building-mounted, and we're proposing goose neck lights over doors and other areas. One of the board's members did mention how you're going to light up around the cooler area. I really don't have a way other than a goose neck light mounted above that, and I think that'll work okay. If I put more in there, it's going to spill over to the bank property, which I know we can't do, but I think it's well lit in that area, and we hope you agree with that. The building setbacks, as the board has known, is that the building is set back 15 feet off the right-of-way of Titus Avenue. We're only one foot off the property line between us and the bank, which leaves us four feet of room between Granger Avenue. This does meet, is code compliant with the zoning. Alan, I think you mentioned fencing. We reviewed that with the DPDW director. She has no problem with the fencing along Titus Avenue. Even though it's a county road, the town does maintain that fence, and as long as she says you're off the sidewalk, they're good with that. Sticking with the patio, we're proposing a patio with a covered roof, so people can enjoy their meals outside. That will be protected with the columns of the patio roof, and I gave the board sketches of what we're looking at. Those will be wrapped in stone to protect them, and then there'll also be a metal wrought iron type fence between those posts, and that's where people will dine. So I gave you some color examples of what we're looking at for that area. The other examples where I gave you, I gave you the goose neck lighting that we're proposing over the sign. We are not, we do not have a sign plan in front of you tonight. We're still working through that. One of the goals that we need tonight, we're hoping that we get some kind of approval, because all projects are hinged on financing. So my client needs an approval letter in order to go to the bank and continue on with this design. The landscaping area, like I said, is only 150 square feet total. We have room that, for one tree, so we're proposing a Japanese maple that's going to be adjacent to the patio, and then there'll be some annual plantings around that. There's not a lot of area. Along the east-west side of Granger, we have a two-foot area adjacent to the building. We've modified the curbing in that area, and it's very hard to describe it, I call it "hard to describe" it, but there's an area where we can put some tall grasses that are saw-tolerant and some pea gravel, so we don't have mulch going into the sidewalk. But I did work with the DPW, as I said before, on that sidewalk area. We are really just closing an entrance, and in doing that, we're taking granite curb away and adding granite curb in its place, closing the entrance, we're creating an island. All the islands along Granger place in this area are paved. They're not, so they really didn't put mulch or anything in there. There are some plantings, so we're trying to be consistent with that. Trying to go through my notes here, but as the board knows, we have two access points. We are going to have an access for employees and guests on the back of the building at the southeast corner that'll allow people to enter into the building right from the parking lot, and my client has modified his floor plan to accommodate that. The other entrance is at the northeast corner of the building, facing Titus Avenue. They'll enter that. There is no external access to the dining area on the north side of the building. They would have to enter that area from the building itself, and there is a door that leads from the building to the cooler. So the cooler itself will not have any external doors. That'll be, they'll have to service that or load that from within the kitchen area. As I mentioned before, this is a two-story building, but half the building, the front half facing Titus, will be a cathedral ceiling all the way from the floor to the second floor, open area, and then the second, there'll be a floor on, over the kitchen area, about half the building that'll be utilized for storage and things such as that. There is no basement proposed, so storage is paramount for this facility. That's a brief overview. I went quickly over the project, but I think I hit on most of the points that we talked about during the workshop, and I would welcome any comments from you guys related to the plan.
So, Mr. Sheraba, the first question I have is regarding the storage, do you have that depicted anyplace on the plans as to, it's not apartments and it's cathedral?
It's not apartments.
Can you put that on the plan someplace?
It's hard for me as a site plan to show that, but I could label it. I think what we're looking for is they'll be on the building permit plans for the architectural plans, but I have no problem noting that in some fashion on my site plan.
Anybody else have questions? Go ahead. Go ahead, Michelle. That was it. Go ahead, Mr. Huber.
Can you share a little bit about the exterior elevations?
Sure. I'm not as in touch with as Tom, and he might have to get up here, but it is going to be an EFS product on the front facade, all the way around on all four sides. The front facing Titus and a little bit down Granger Avenue will have a stone element. We do have examples of the stone that we're proposing. The metal, the windows will be metal trim, black. These will be clear glazing on the lower level. We did put mullions in the windows up on the second floor to give more residential feel. Tom's still working through some of these, some thoughts are putting outings over the second floor. He's not, you know, even some decorative lentils and things like that. He's still working through that, but you know, this is really the goal he wants to achieve, and if we're lucky enough to get approval, if the board wanted to see the final renderings or final colors, we do have to come back for a sign. We don't have a problem coming back with more detailed plans, but it's really an EFS product, you know, trying to get a little feel of the village feel with a modern flair. Looking at, House Guitars didn't really want to match their stone, but you know, incorporate that. So you have the House Guitars, our building, and the bank, and we're just trying to blend some of those elements together.
Any other questions?
John, thanks for listening on some of the stuff that we've talked about. The landscaping up front, we talked about a water feature or water garden or whatever you're calling it.
Yeah. So it's, we're trying to do, still, we have a detail on the plan. We're not doing anything that's DC compliant as far as a rain garden, but we want to do something that can hold the water for a period of time. So there'll be a depressed area, trying to balance that with the tree and some planting. So we only have a 15 by seven-foot area, so we have to have room for the plant, and you know, and there's no real outlet for that facility, other than seeping into the ground.
Right.
Water, if a large event, the water's going to go over that and possibly onto the sidewalk and create a hazard, but we want to, that's really what we're looking to do, is to create something in there. It's really hard to show on a plan with such a, with such a scale.
So you haven't flushed it out yet?
Well, I think we have the intent. We do detail it, we show the detail.
I have intent to be rich.
Yeah.
Do I have a plan on getting there? Not yet.
Yep. If you look at the detail on page three, it clearly shows our, what we're showing to do as far as the bio retention area for the rain area.
And then what is the seating area? What's the floor of the seating area?
The square footage of the interior?
No. What is it made out of? Sorry.
Oh, the, right now, we're looking at stamped concrete outside.
So if that water did overflow, it's going to hit that area too?
Well, I think it's, so the building is proposed about a half-foot higher than both sidewalks on Titus Avenue and Granger Avenue, so it's going to, so that patio area will generally be higher about a half-foot, so it's not going to go into that.
And how much seating is going to go out there?
Don't really have that, but I would say estimate, you know, what's the max for that? For the outside? I'm thinking maybe six tables?
All right. There was something else. The, there's no access then from that front seating area to the restaurant if you were not already in the restaurant?
Correct.
All right. So that's a solid fence around there?
Yes.
All right. I think the project's fine. I think that we should take a little more time here, just because we've gotten these plans today, and I don't know who in the public has seen them. It's going to be my only, I, no problem with that. It's a process issue for me at this moment. I would like to see a little bit more colors and what you guys want to spell out on there.
Well, I can have Tom speak to that. He does, he'll bring examples tonight, and I'll let Mr. Perdev show you what we have and give you a little more explanation on that.
How you doing? I'm Tom Perdev. Nice to meet you guys. For the stone, I'm going to go with this kind of stone about four feet up on the walls, and with the EFS, I'm looking for a nice gray. That doesn't show the color properly. It's not even close. It's more of a brown color, but it's going to be more of a grayish, lighter bluish gray color to give it a more modern feel. The letters are going to be pretty much single plastic I-HOTS letters on the building. Black, I haven't gone over it with the sign company to get the true detail of it, but it's going to be pretty much simple to fit the neighboring businesses, like kind of similar to Titus Tavern. So that's pretty much it.
For the front of the building, any thought of, you know, instead of the EFS, you know, extending the stone all the way up to the roof, you know, just having the front facing look different, or even if you did like a stone veneer?
Well, the thing is with the stone, if I go up to the ceiling, it's going to really increase my cost incredibly, so I kind of want to keep my cost down as much as possible. But I can work with other materials if that EFS doesn't work with you. I could maybe come up with something else.
You know, just to provide a little more variation, especially with the front facing of the building?
Right. I plan on putting some detail in there. When you see the architectural drawings, you'll understand a little bit more. This is very plain Jane compared to what the architectural drawings are going to look like.
I agree with John. I think everything looks phenomenal, like I feel like we're almost there. I'm just really wondering about that primary facade, exactly what it's going to look like, exactly what colors you're going to use, if you're going to do lentils, if you're going to do what color exactly. Everything else looks terrific, but there's a little, I'm not exactly 100% confident it sounds like what you have on there is actually what you have in mind.
Right. Well, if we move forward, I can get the architectural drawings done, and we can get approval on that if you would like.
The, and I'll ask, John, this drawing that I'm looking at right here, is that the canopy or what is this?
Well, you really spearheaded the conversation about that, so those are the, what we're thinking about is the columns around the canopy.
Okay.
To protect the public or people.
Protect the building also, right?
Correct. But the colors are not correct, and the pressure-treated beams, I'm sure I'm not going to be looking just like that. They'll be covered or stained properly.
Okay. Are you using beams or are you using metal?
I'm thinking there probably be beams.
Okay. So it'll be wood?
Yep. So I guess to your point about architectural features, you know, Arundicote does not have an architectural review board, so we're kind of stuck, you know, how far can we go? You know, we would love to come back, you know, if we got preliminary or final subject to something. We mentioned the sign. If we come back, if we get final subject to the planning board approving the colors, I gather some, we're kind of under the gun with the bank and things like that, working through the financing. I would love to find a mechanism that we can come together and make sure that the board's comfortable with what you see related to the building, because I think we all want that to look very, very nice.
I definitely don't want to hold up the process here. I mean, I would be comfortable giving preliminary and having them come back with the detailed facade and then go from there. That's like the only thing. Everything else looks, the site plan looks great.
Yeah. No, that's fine. That's, we're, you know, we know what our intent was, and we know that this is kind of light, and that works for us.
Did we have any comments from DPW or from, is it in my packet and I just haven't seen it? Or from Lovella?
No comments from us, just because the updated plans came today.
Yeah. All right. I'm with, same place Brad is on this. I mean, I was before I walked in here. I just think that we need the public to have a little look too, and I know that Ann has spearheaded a lot, her and Jeff, in their neighborhood, so. But I also want this to be successful, so if we need to do a little step forward to get you a big step forward, I think that.
Yeah. We appreciate that.
I'm willing to do that.
So there was a comment from Aaron McGee about sanitary and stormwater connections. Did you address that? Did you see this?
I may have. I don't have it in front of me, but.
Basically says, "I don't see a sanitary and stormwater connection or detail for how the connection will be made. Please provide fixtures proposed inside kitchen and grease trap signs and details."
Yeah. So they are on the plan. They're hard to see again with this scale. If you notice the plans from your previous packet, we went to 10 scale, so we have all the sanit, there was a building there, so the sanitary connections on Granger Avenue, excuse me, Grange Avenue, so we have to kind of hunt and peck and find that a little bit. We got it located in the best way. It's about a third north of the northeast corner of the building. That's where the sanitary appears to be. Water comes in from Titus Avenue along with gas, and there are no storm connections, so that's kind of challenging with this. So we're going to look into proposing a storm connection. We're working on the east entrance, so north of the sanitary tap, so that's what we're proposing.
John, just one item, very minor. On the southeast corner of the building, where you have the proposed sidewalk kind of wrapping around the building and then going to that five-foot wide walkway you're doing?
Yes.
You just have this little isthmus right there of pavement or asphalt. I would just double-check your width to make sure it's enough for somebody to walk through.
Yeah. So that's, so right there, that light pole that we showed? That's the kind of the ornamental, you know, old-fashioned city light pole, and that's, it's tight in there.
I don't know if you want to pull your landscaping back, maybe a couple feet to the north?
Yeah. We tried to put an even radius in, but I see your point. I like it. Yeah. Thank you.
Just one more detail. You said you're covering, or you're going to have 150 feet of landscaping, right?
Correct.
And what was it prior to that? Was it much more, right?
Very little. There's a little more currently along the frontage of Titus Avenue, and that's the extent of landscaping.
So net-net, do you know?
I do.
Out of curiosity.
We're increasing it from, the current is 92.5%, and we're going to 95.8%.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So it was going up?
Going up.
Okay. So is there any other questions? I just want to understand from you, you need at least preliminary to continue forward with the process?
Yeah. We would like some kind of approval, close the public hearing, preliminary approval, and keep moving on would be, I guess, I don't know what to come back with. It might not see me, it might see an architect, so that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Okay.
It might not be tomorrow. It might be six months from now.
A month. Depending on what you get a month, you get a whole month.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I would suggest if the board does move forward with preliminary, that you all come to some sort of consensus of a list of items to be.
Oh, we always do. Yeah. We're not shy with that. Okay. Seeing none, I'll move to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak to this, please come to the podium, state your name and address, address your comments to the board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Burns. I live at 199 Bellhurst Drive. I'm here this evening as co-chairperson of helping Arundicote Plan for Progress, the HIP group, a community stakeholder group that's worked tirelessly for over 25 years on the thoughtful redevelopment and the renaissance of the Titus Cooper Hudson Mixed-Use Commercial District. We are very much here in support of this application. We're really excited for the return of this much-loved business in the district. We agree with the comments from the planning board made at the workshop. This is the first we're seeing any of the other elevations, but encouraging possibly the use of brick, at least on the primary facade, and I gave some comments that I'm hoping the applicant also received. So, and it showed a building in Scanny Atlas, and to save money, they did the front facade in brick and then did the other three remaining sides with a concrete stucco finish that melded with the brick. So, you know, we, we want to make sure we're being cost-conscious, really want to help, but we really, this is the heart of the district here, and EFS is usually a suburban kind of compound material that's used a lot on suburban shopping plazas, and sometimes the seeming of it can pick up dirt and after a few years be less than attractive. So we just wanted to give those comments. I did provide pictures of that, that building that is a brand-new build, but it blends very well with all the vintage architecture that they have in Scanny Atlas, and something like this could blend very well with, we have some really good historic structures there. Mr. Sheraba mentioned the Grange Hall, the House of Guitars, and we also have the federally or nationally-registered designated Arundicote United Church of Christ right across the street. So that's, we're really trying to make this meld with what's there, and that's why I provided this example from Scanny Atlas. Even though it was built as a new build, it really fits their village feel, and it would fit what we have going on on Titus Avenue. The other building that could be emulated is 690 Titus, where the Titus Tavern is. That has brick on two sides with, you know, the concrete on the remaining two sides in the back, but something like that with a simple cornice at the top. We talked about the two-over-two windows that they also use in Scanny Atlas, and that was mentioned by the planning board during the workshop. So loving all the elements and the conversation about these elements. You know, we're grateful that the applicant has met with the DPW. That's awesome, and that things are going forward with that. We also appreciate that the applicant is planning goose neck lighting for the potential sign that's going to be there. Based on the design guidelines for the Titus Cooper Hudson District, you know, we ask that the one sign plan be similar to the other signs that are there on Titus Avenue. The style of sign really needs to be in keeping with the upscale signage that's been the trademark of this neighborhood since the mixed-use commercial code was enacted. It's really, it really makes a difference, as we all know. Other details of the site. We really, really appreciate the applicant, including the colorful red bicycle bike rack on the southeast side of the building, near the employee entrance of the building, for the convenience of patrons as well as pedestrians visiting the neighborhood. Our group has done similar bike racks, and they are very well. Um, our group, um, has done similar bike racks and they are very well-used. Um, in terms of the shared parking, we also appreciate that they've, um, reached out to the United Church of Christ to get an agreement there and now the Nolan family for sharing parking lots. There's an abundance of, um, parking lots in this area, so it would be good to use what's already there. And then we, we just look forward to seeing more detailed plans as things move along. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would you like to come up or respond? To the public input?
I think that, uh, we appreciate the comments of the HIPA group and Mrs. Burns regarding the plan. I think, uh, we're looking at more of an architectural view of this project site. I think the site plan stands alone, um, and works well. I think we're right there. So I think that, um, Mr. Perdev has to, um, give you some more insight onto the final drawing set and, um, design of the building and give you updated colors and look forward to doing that in the near future.
Thank you. Uh, so since we're heading towards preliminary, do you want me to keep the public hearing open?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna leave the public hearing open at this point. So at this point, unless I hear different, anybody had any other discussion? We should probably move forward with drafting the things that we would wanna see in order to get him to final approval. So who would like to start?
I'll go ahead. I think this should start as a motion.
Or do you wanna do the motion or you wanna make the list first? It's up to you. We can do. Yeah, let's make the list.
Yeah, whichever way you wanna do it. Yeah. I, um, one thing I'd like I did is how the, um, cooler is going to be cooled, the outside storage.
I'm sorry, are you starting to?
No, we're not doing a motion. We're just gathering.
No, we're just doing comments.
Cause there's, there's a lot of different discussions we made. We're gonna gather the comments, then we'll make the motion.
So, uh, Mr. Twitty, do we have to do seeker before they start?
Not before we start the list, uh, because it is technically a discretionary approval, even though it's preliminary. I would advise, uh, doing seeker on this, on listed action before taking a motion on the preliminary approval. But we can begin with the list.
Okay.
So how the cooler, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just identify if it's gonna be external right there or if it's gonna be part of the HVAC system on the roof. Cause it can happen either way. I, my guess is you haven't banged it out yet.
So identify cooler mechanics, cooler.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Alright. Next?
I'm with John and Brad on this, the facade, doing something more than Iphis on it.
Facade details?
Yeah, we need a detailed, um, elevation of the facades. And then the recommendation is to see if you can do something more robust on the primary facade on Titus. I think everybody's open to doing something cost-effective on the other three. But maybe something like the brick, just because that seems to be what's prevalent in that corridor, if it's all possible.
Detail elevation of the facade and something more robust, says it simply, yeah.
And if it can also show the, the water line where that's gonna be on the rest of the building.
So everything that the DPW asked for?
No, they, um, where the, the stone is going to be on the building. Is it gonna be three feet up, four feet up?
Wouldn't that be part of the detailed elevation or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that would be part of it.
Yeah, but since we drew up the north facade.
Including stone around building, right?
You may wish to ask for a color sample. Because sometimes the renderings don't necessarily accurately depict.
Well, and he's already said that.
Yeah. And then, um, I don't know how you guys feel, but they do have a, what the light's gonna look like, but there's no actual, we don't normally get the actual lights.
Yeah, we still need a photometrics on this. I don't know that we actually have.
Do you intend on doing your, um, typical lights-on, lights-off on this?
Yes.
Uh, would we need to say that now as part of this approval? Because if we don't, yeah.
Yeah. So, we didn't ask the hours of oper-
More of when they come back for signage approval? That would be under the signage approval.
I think that's a fair comment.
That's fair.
Okay.
But, you know, a good question was, we didn't ask the hours of operation. Do you know what you're planning?
Yeah, eleven to midnight?
Eleven, did you catch that, Michelle? So you didn't come to?
Yeah, we open eleven till midnight. I mean, let's, things change around here. Everything seems like it closes by midnight and I don't see nothing happening beyond that.
So so far I got, identify the cooler mechanics, detailed elevation of facade with something more robust, including stone around the building. Doesn't sound right.
If we get detailed elevations, that'll.
I think it'll cover the stone.
It'll include whether or not there's stones. So just detailed elevations of all sides. And then they've heard our comment about what we're looking for, so we don't need to include that as part of this. Just what's open to review.
And details on the facade.
Yeah. Yeah, you got, you got elevations and details on the primary facade. I think we covered it.
Okay. Uh, color samples? Uh, did we want, oh, do we want the light fixture details?
Yeah. Gray arm normally.
It's not much here, is this?
No, it's really not. It's just the elevations really.
Is that it? Okay, so before we.
On there about inside?
Yeah, bye. What do you call it on the plans? A comment or note depicting that the, you're gonna have a cathedral feeling, ceiling in the front and only used for storage? How do you want me to?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, if you're holding up final approval on architectural plans, it'll be part of that plan set.
Oh, you'll have that in there?
Yeah, we can't do anything more on my end.
But we'll put it in one of the things we're looking for. So details on second floor. How's that? Documented. Trying to keep this as easy as possible. Anything else? Okay, so now.
And any that Lobella would have?
Address. Any DPW comments? And potential, or and future Lobella comments if needed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And county comments.
That would come as a regular, part of our standard approval anyways.
Right. And you don't think we should put on here the, oh yeah, cause it's gonna be part of the sign? Well, lights is being addressed here, so I think we should put it on here. About one hour before and two hours after. You, or you really think it's part of the sign?
I think that's part of the final process, approval. We're talking about all the lights in the business except for safety.
All the lights in the business.
I'm comfortable leaving it till final. I mean, cause they're not gonna do anything anyway. But I.
Yeah, when, when we do that, it's usually about the sign, not necessarily about the lights on the building. Right? So, so.
Okay.
I don't agree.
Okay.
I think.
I, I can be.
I think it, I think.
I kinda remember with the bank, we, we addressed it all, so.
They had like so many signs.
But I think we've always addressed the total lights on the property, except for what was needed by law or by, for safety. But I have no reason to think we need to do that tonight unless you guys do.
It'll just make it easier. They come back in, you'll have it addressed, right?
Well, we'll also get a better idea of what the light is gonna be. I mean, and what the calvins are gonna be, all the stuff that I don't see at this moment.
I'm just hoping it comes back with everything we asked for and.
Light contours are on there with the wall packs and I showed you an example of them.
What we're talking about is, we normally ask for the lights one hour before the business opens and two hours after.
For signage.
For signage. But, well, okay, I'm fine.
I think, are you, are you talking about like the Christmas lights? Is that what you're kinda concerned about?
No, I don't remember us ever limiting.
I don't remember us limited to just signage.
To signage either, ever. But I, my relation, my.
Does anybody direct if we put it on there now, just so they have it, so there's no, yeah. What? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So what we're talking, I just wanna make sure it's okay with the applicant if somebody wants to come to the podium. What we asked for is, depending on your hours of operation, we asked that you only have the lights on one hour prior and two hours after.
Okay.
As a max.
Yeah, there's no problems.
Okay.
That would be two o'clock in the morning. Okay, fair enough. Alright, just as long.
What were you thinking, Brad?
I'm fine with it. I was just making sure everybody else was fine with it. Cause usually like when we're talking about it, business is closed at eight or nine and then two hours after that is like ten or eleven. In this case, it would be much later.
Okay, anything else?
So you would, you would state that that's site lighting?
Yes.
Not signage lighting?
Right.
Yeah.
So the sign light can be on?
No, the sign when the sign comes back.
All lighting. All lighting.
But we have in the past.
It was never just signage lighting.
I believe that when, when applications have come back, and I'm not, I don't wanna go back and forth on this right now, but I can research it, that when applications have come back for signage approval, the planning board had enlisted a condition that the sign lighting be turned off, turned on one hour before and off two hours after.
That's, yeah, I don't think we need to beat that one at this moment. We're not gonna go near lighting as far as approval goes.
Shelley, you were trying to say something?
A property shouldn't have to go dark, like, it should be having security lighting on.
Yeah, and that's what we've always said. If you need it for safety.
So you wouldn't expect a property to go dark overnight, like the main lighting, like the signs? The signs, but.
I definitely would.
A property go pitch back?
I would rather see the stars than their buildings.
But like the property lighting around.
Yeah, I think we're going down a road we don't need to.
Yeah, what I wrote down, if everybody's okay with it, is all lights, um, versus safety lights will be on one hour before and two hours after operating hours.
That's what we've normally done.
And we'll leave it at that and then when the signs come, if we need to specify something more specific, we'll do it. I don't think we have to beat it much more. But I do remember other, well, we won't go into it. We, we talked, we talked about the internal lighting. I even think on that Reliant next door, if you recall.
That is.
Yeah. It's another story.
Football field there.
Yeah.
Okay, nevermind that.
I don't know if that was ever, we never would have approved that, so I don't know.
I think they did get it approved, so, okay.
Oh.
So I think the next thing, oh, anything more, guys? If you wanna, no? Okay, so now we need to look at seeker. Ms. Powers, you wanna give us the heads-up on this? Anything that we're concerned with, it's an unlisted action?
I mean, we can go through the checklist.
Just real quick, if you wanna, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so actually it is, um, uh, Michelle corrected me that it's a type two based on the square footage. So that, that concludes the seeker process.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's a type two. Alright. Any other questions before we proceed with the motions? Okay, who would like to make the motion on seeker? I'll make the motion. It's a type two.
You don't need a motion for seeker.
Oh, it's just type two? Just declare it as type two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead and do the motion on the?
Sure. So regarding case number PB two zero two five point zero eight dash oh one, we are moving forward with a preliminary site plan approval with the following, um, conditions and things that we need. One, identify the cooler mechanics. Uh, that's the outside cooler mechanics, right? External. Detailed elevations of all sides and details on the facade. It's the second one. We need color samples. We need the light fixture details. That's the external light feature details, I should be specific. Details on the second floor documented, uh, uses. Address any DPW comments and future Lobella and county comments as necessary. And that all versus safety lights will be on one hour before the business opens and two hours after operating hours. That's my motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we just have one absent tonight, so that passes. Seven ayes, zero nays, one absent. Thank you. We look forward to you guys moving forward. Hopefully this gets what you needed. Thank you.
Thank you for doing, it, it really did come in right with the mock guidelines. I, I, we have a little thing here with the exterior elevation, but this is really great. Thank you.
That one with the elevations, we don't have a copy of that, do we? It's okay, we'll get it the next time anyways, but. Oh, yeah, as long as you're gonna submit it. Michelle, do you need that, that he presented tonight? It's, it's got the elevations on it. This one doesn't.
I'm gonna wait.
Okay.
Get their revised plan, but he's gonna give me a copy of what you guys got.
Good.
Okay. Okay, that'd be great.
Any other business before the board? Anything from staff? I move that we adjourn. Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.